Good evening Wakefield and welcome to the school committee meeting on this Wednesday, October 14th, 2020. We just concluded an executive session as stated in the agenda. I'd like to note that a small group of us are in studio, social distancing, but this is a virtual meeting which is being broadcast live on WCAT's Facebook page. I'd like to start the meeting off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next is the reading of our mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Next on the agenda is the public comments section. For anyone from the public who wishes to participate, I would ask now that you identify yourself with your name and address. I'm not hearing any participation, so I will move on with the agenda. Do we have a consent agenda, Suzy?
Sorry. Move that the school committee approve the minutes of the September 8th, 2020 school committee meeting and accept the minutes of the September 10th, 2020 School Committee Policy and Communications Subcommittee Meeting and the minutes of the September 11th, 2020 and the September 17th, 2020 School Committee Finance and Facilities Subcommittee Meetings as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Judy, are you with us?
She's here.
She is.
Judy, can you hear us?
Oh, she looks like she's frozen.
Okay, so she's saying that Zoom is not responding on her end? So until she can connect, I can take care of this roll call. So myself, yes. Ms. Vayor?
Yes.
Ms. Guida?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Callanan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, hopefully Judy can take care of her technical difficulties. So we have budget items, Christine?
Yes, tonight you have the financial report through September 30th. This is the first quarter of the fiscal year for fiscal '21. As you'll see, we've encumbered all salaries, we've encumbered utilities, we've encumbered PPE and instructional supplies to date. You'll also see that we've put in for all of our grants and revolving accounts, started collecting for user fees, which we reduced at the last meeting to 135 from 175. We are collecting preschool tuition, we are collecting and also for Wakefield Academy. The one thing I will highlight, however, we are not collecting transportation fees this year, which for us is about $115,000, so that's significant. Due to COVID, we had to reduce the number of riders on our buses, so we were not allowed to transport for the high school this year.
Okay.
Does anyone have any questions overall?
Chris?
I just, when you look at the revolving accounts, they don't look very good right now. So how much of that is going to be offset by grants? Are you waiting to come in?
So the revolving school lunch has just started and as we all know that the meals this year are free. We're in seamless summer, so it's a program that the USDA is funding, so all students can eat lunch for free. Participation is skyrocketing, so this is fantastic for us. So it will help provide for the program. So you won't really see much in terms of revenue yet, but probably by the next month you will, when you're tuning in from home, Chris, next month. The same for performing arts and athletics. We really haven't started collecting yet. The one big issue is circuit breaker. Because the state doesn't have a budget yet, we're anticipating a 70% reimbursement for circuit breaker. So for us, that's good because we budgeted at 66%. So that will help alleviate that negative 493 that we have right now. But in terms of where we were last year, you know, it's pretty similar.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, last year was much more dire. But the big thing is that we had not accounted for the circuit breaker, right?
Right.
Right. Any other questions for Christine? Colleen?
Yeah, Christine, on the school lunch, I think that you said before that that program runs through December. Is that correct?
That's a perfect segue, Colleen. Thank you. We just found out this week it's been extended till June. Thank you.
Oh, that's fantastic. Okay, wonderful.
Yes, we're thrilled. We just found out.
That's great news. And that's breakfast and lunch, Christine?
Well, we're not really serving breakfast because of logistics for.
Right, right. Not yet.
But it's lunch for all locations. Our only location that's in person is the Galvin, but we're seeing record numbers right now.
Yeah.
It's grab and go, so kids can just grab it when they're leaving the school, the high school, elementary for their cohort, taking it on the bus or getting it as they arrive. So it's fantastic.
That's great. Great news. Thank you.
Thank you for that update. Just a quick question on the monthly financial for special ed, the 301,000. So what, can you explain that?
So it's negative due to circuit breaker, but it's also negative to, you see in the fiscal '21 transfer column?
Yes.
The 837,000. So those were purchase orders from last year that we encumbered for others, for tuitions, but we carried them forward and they're now in the contracted service column because that's where the town put them, but they're going to offset that 301,000.
And then for the instructional supplies, as of August 31st, where that was a negative, were those just things that we purchased?
So you'll notice it was negative at the end of August, but it's positive now. But that's because we got our first installment of our COVID relief grant. So we were able to move things that we charged to the local budget to that grant.
Okay.
We have more to do, so it will help with that.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Any other questions for Christine? Okay, seeing none.
So NACIS payroll report?
Yes.
For the month of September? I think we have a motion.
You. Move that the school committee approve payroll warrants 10 and 12 as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Ms. Vayor?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Callanan?
Yes.
Ms. Guida?
Yes.
And is Mr. Bedrow here or no?
I don't think he's with us.
Don't think so.
No, not yet. Thank you. Is that all you had?
So I just, and Chris and I were talking about he's the signature for the bills. So I think he'll be making his last signing tomorrow, but then we'll have to think about who's going to sign the bills moving forward.
Okay. All right, we can take care of that.
Great. Got to pay our vendors, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, moving forward with the agenda, I just have a couple of things I wanted to mention. Tomorrow night, we, the school committee, is participating in a joint meeting with the town council. Their meeting starts at 7:00 and we will, they have to take care of some business first, but we will be zooming in at 7:30. And the purpose of that meeting is for us to jointly appoint the two open seats to the school committee. And also, the school committee has three human rights commission seats that needs to be appointed as well. So that will happen tomorrow. And then we do have our annual tri board meeting scheduled for next Thursday, the 21st, between the town council, school committee, and the finance committee. And that meeting will be a good opportunity for each board to provide important information and updates relative to the current fiscal year and also how we all, each board intends to move forward during this, during these difficult times. So that's all I had. If any, does anybody have any questions? Seeing none, then I will, oh, Suzy, yes.
The AV?
Yep.
Do we have any more details about how the process is going to run tomorrow night?
I'm still working on the logistics, so I was hoping to get an email out to you guys before this meeting, but I did not have time. So either this evening or in the morning, I'll be sure to provide you with the information.
Okay. Perfect. Thanks.
You're welcome. Okay, moving on to Kara?
Sure.
Or is it done?
Yeah, let me start off if that's okay. Yeah. The, I'd like to start off just with comments and updates. And this morning, we started our day, on Tuesday mornings, we have a standing, what we call our crisis team meeting, where leaders from across the district, from every school, we have our nurse leaders, as well as community members, our emergency management lead from the town, Tom Walsh, joins us. Often, the fire chief and police will join us as well. But we get together and we discuss kind of reopening and the challenges that we're facing, what we're doing to problem solve, and just to give an update across the community what's happening. In that meeting this morning, also part of that group is Ruth Clay, the Director of Wakefield Board of Health. In our meeting this morning, Ruth let us know that on the Massachusetts COVID dashboard, that's run by the Department of Public Health, that our color designation for Wakefield, which had been in the green category, was going to change due to the increased number of cases that we've had in Wakefield. Our percentage changed from 0.7% to 1.57%. And so, and our color designation went from green to red, right? And that change is really based on the rate of change in the last 14 days. And so, and this is an important metric. We pay very close attention to this. One of the positive things in learning about this data and working closely with MassDPH and the Board of Health is that this data for us on the school side is really a prompt to understand and to learn more about the virus, the COVID virus, and how it's transmitted, and really where it's transmitted. And one of the things that our Board of Health and our school nurses have been really exceptional at in the first weeks of our Phase 3 planning has been contact tracing and really paying particular attention, supporting the Board of Health, to track close contacts. So the reason for this uptick was a localized cluster outbreak, which was not in the schools, according to Ruth, which is positive. So I know that they are discussing this tonight at the Board of Health, and we'll be getting more information from them. But in our initial kind of reporting from her to us on the school side, she felt like the cluster outbreak did not intersect with school-aged children or families that would kind of inhibit or would affect the school in regard to our reopening or our daily operations. So there'll be more information to follow on that, but that's just a very quick update. And I want to thank Ruth Clay, the Board of Health, our nurses, and especially our district crisis team for helping with our reopening plans for the past three weeks as we were moving into Week 3 of Phase 3. Which, and this is a perfect segue for me to kind of turn it over to Kara, our Assistant Superintendent Kara Morrow, who's going to talk about and just give a very quick update around reopening. Again, I think one of the things that's important to note in setting a context is that, you know, we are only in today's Day 11, if I'm correct, Kara?
I think so.
Today's Day 11 of Phase 3. We are grateful for every in-person day that we can get with students. We're working at improving our schedules and how we're supporting students and families every day, but I'll turn it over to Kara.
Great. Thanks, Doug. Yep, so like Doug said, just a quick update. Today, once a week, we schedule, we continue our meetings with our reopening teams, which have gotten a little bit smaller at every level, more administrative, but we wanted to keep those meetings going each week as standing meetings where we're continuing to refine our plans. We're into Phase 3, as Doug said, but our work, you know, still continues just looking to gain feedback on how things are going and refine. So just put together a couple of slides for each level to address some of the topics that are happening at the reopening meetings. So I'll start with the Doyle Early Childhood Center. Overall, things are going really well at Doyle. The schedule that was put out for Phase 3 is in play. We have a combination of students paying, tuitioning in, as well as our students in special education receiving services and inclusion opportunities. As always happens each year, the Doyle gets referrals from early intervention or parent referrals for special education, and so that evaluation process has already started up. And our Doyle staff will be working with families and supporting the evaluation process. As students qualify or may be entitled to a placement at Doyle as part of that process, we've accounted for that in the planning, in the reopening planning. So we're not, you know, too concerned about not having enough spots. I think that was part of the whole reopening planning, was to make sure that we had appropriate space throughout the year as students transition in from early intervention. So that's happening, and you know, as I said, their full schedule is up and running, and we checked in with Shannon Blacker this morning. Appears to be going well overall. And I did want to highlight that there is a position that we dedicated for some remote services and at the preschool level, and that isn't for tuitioning, for any tuitioning in families. It's more so for students in special education who opted to go full remote. So we do have that support being provided at the preschool level as well. And that will be, you know, as we talk about in a couple of slides, we'll talk about quarantine education, but that will also be a support to our students at the Doyle should the need for quarantine arise, and just to give some live interactions as well for those students. So yeah, so overall, things are going well at Doyle. At the elementary level, a topic that is being most discussed, I think, feedback we're getting from parents, from teachers, what we're thinking about administratively is just that asynchronous piece of the elementary schedule. In creating the elementary schedule, we really wanted to focus on as much in-person time as we could make happen, which was our goal. So we have our elementary students coming in four days a week, live in front of their teachers. And then we really also, as part of that plan, wanted to reduce the remote learning piece for our elementary learners as we, you know, the feedback we got from the spring was that was quite challenging. But we are responsible for, you know, the other half of their day when they're not with their teachers. So what we've been doing is working with our teachers, our principals, our instructional leaders, our literacy coaches, and curriculum coordinator to run curriculum planning meetings on Wednesdays. And the reason that we prioritized this time in the schedule, and it is a significant amount of time, but we felt like it was an important priority, was to make sure that we had all of our teachers across all of our schools on the same page in terms of what was being delivered for content. We've had to really reprioritize what we're looking at, what we're teaching during the live blocks, and reorder when and how we're teaching things. So it's really important to have that time, that collaborative time together. I think it's definitely a shift for the district. I think it's a lot of collaboration that has happened really quickly, but I think it's definitely something administratively we want to prioritize, just in terms of equitable experiences across all of our schools. And this isn't, this isn't new feedback. I think this is feedback that came up in our Learn Anywhere Committee, just in terms of, you know, assignment comparison, what was happening in this class might not be happening in that class. And I think we really want to put, you know, all of our teachers together in a room, you know, to give us, in a Zoom room, to give us feedback and let us know what they think is important in terms of the live teaching that happened that morning. So I will go over, I wanted to present a visual of the template that was rolled out this week. So in Phase 2, we found, we had remote learning happening at the elementary level, and we also had, you know, teachers were designing and putting out their own asynchronous learning opportunities for families, which was great. But I think the thing that we found also was that it was definitely inconsistent across what was being offered in the schools. So we felt it was really important to come together as an elementary level across, you know, the entire kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, and have some common systems in place for families, an easy-to-follow guide, general template that could support the asynchronous time when kids are home and not with their teachers. And so it was really trying to strike a balance of hearing the feedback from parents that learning at home is really challenging for elementary students. So this template offers guidance around how the time could be used, and it's a combination of digital curriculum resources that we invested in. We have Lexia, which is meant to reinforce literacy skills, RAS Kids, Epic, or we give the option of a physical book just to promote the independent reading piece. And then ST Math is another math digital curriculum resource that we've recently invested in. We piloted last year. We piloted both iReady and ST Math and came out deciding on ST Math as a more engaging tool that could reach more learners that we want to put out there. So relatively speaking, in terms of the screen time conversation for elementary students, you know, if you really look at their day, they're, you know, we're really trying to not have students on screens when they're with their teachers. There's that live learning piece that's so precious. So we reserve the screen time for when they could be home, and just also thinking that that might be an easier ask for working parents in terms of, you know, helping out. These are self-paced programs that really move with the kids. But that doesn't discredit, you know, the fact that this is hard for, this is, everything right now is hard for families, and so we need to work and adjust as we go. So the other piece of the template is what our teachers have been working on together. We do have a specialist block in there, and then, you know, movement break, SEL, teacher choice, and then some reinforcement of the live lessons. And that's what we're really trying to seek teacher feedback on in terms of the planning and what's being put out across the grade levels. So I think, you know, it's a work in progress. I think the thing that we're stressing most in my communication with parents who have reached out, or, you know, as we're trying to work with our teachers in these curriculum planning meetings and try to pull everyone together, as hard as it is. I think, you know, everyone is used to doing things the way that they've always done it, but administratively, I think we're really concerned about how many different pockets of students we have right now. We have students in Cohort A, students in Cohort B, we have students doing full remote learning, and then at points during the year, we'll have students in quarantine. So we really need to account for what our students are learning and make sure that we're all on the same page throughout this year, as much as we can be, in hopes that we're back full-time together next year. So that's just a breakdown on the elementary. I can open up for questions after each level or just at the end? Do we just do it at the end or? Yeah, that's fine, unless, unless somebody, Suzy, do you have any questions in regards to this particular section?
I do not.
Okay.
I had had one on Doyle, but I couldn't go back.
Oh, and I meant to, I'm sorry, I didn't scan. I had to show the visual of the template. I talked and didn't show it. Sorry about that. You had a question about the Doyle, Chris?
At the Doyle, I mean, we have to maintain a ratio of typical kids as sped kids, right? And I didn't know if we were having any difficulty achieving those ratios.
I don't think we are right now, from our last check-in with Shannon Blacker, and the way she has structured the classes with her reopening team, left some buffers for adding new students throughout the year, as they always do. So I think right now, we're in pretty good shape. You know, we did see our numbers move at Doyle from what we anticipated coming in, and, you know, families made different decisions and some numbers dropped. But I think at this point, we're okay. But, you know, if we do get to a point where there's not as much of a balance in the classrooms, we'll have to rethink things.
I mean, you can't make people come either.
Right. Yeah, yeah. It's a different situation this year, for sure.
So we do, just a note about Doyle. So we are anticipating that our enrollment is going to be increasing slightly because we're going to have some new students that are going to be joining us in the next month. So more to follow on that.
And if I could just direct attention back to the elementary level and to the template, another just key piece that I want to reinforce is just the need for communication and the need for, you know, if parents are struggling with this, I think it's really important to open up the lines of communication with your child's teacher and to really help, you know, figure out what the roadblocks are. I mean, I think this is a guide, it's a general template, it's something that we felt like met the, you know, could be meaningful for kids and met the needs that we were looking for, but it's not something that can't be adjusted with communication. And, you know, in my conversations with parents who have reached out, you know, we're creating a general template. We create a general structure in standard education, and we adjust it as we need to, based on student needs. So I would strongly encourage, because our feedback from parents is definitely all over the map in terms of wanting more for their students, not being able to do as much, wanting less. So we tried to put out a general template that met the feedback as best we could, especially around screen time versus paper pencil tasks or hands-on activities. So we'll continue to be a work in progress, and we hope for it to evolve each week. Suzy?
So Kara, when we talked about the plan back in August, I guess it was, we talked about the elementary schedule being really focused on face-to-face time.
Yep.
Right? And now we're introducing more time kind of in the off-hours. And I think that what happened, but I don't know for sure, which is why I'm asking the question, is, did we realize that we were, we didn't have enough learning time in just the time that was happening face-to-face, and we needed to get more learning time, which is now why we have kind of a more structured afternoon schedule and then Wednesday schedule? Because I think initially we were saying four days, you know, two and a half hours at a time because we wanted to relieve the burden for parents to be the educator.
Right.
And now it feels a little bit like the, and I don't, the burden is back, right? In some cases, because now we've got these expectations that you're going, that the kids are going to do these, kind of the template in the afternoon and on Wednesdays. So can you just talk to that? Because I think there is some confusion with parents of like, wait a minute, I thought we were really trying to ease that burden, and now it's back. I think some parents are asking for it, but I think some parents are feeling really overwhelmed by it. And I know you just kind of talked about that, but can you talk a little bit about how we got here?
So I can just add here, thank you, Suzy, for the question. And so, you know, in a hybrid schedule, in all of our reopening plans at every level, we are servicing half the number of students and half the amount of time that we normally had with them in person, right? So, you know, no matter what hybrid plan and no matter what district that's participating in a hybrid plan, you know, their in-person face-to-face time is with usually half the group for half of the available time in a given week, or if they're in a schedule, they might be in an every other week schedule. But it still equals half the time. So with having only half the So with having only half the, the time of, allocated time in a week to do face-to-face instruction, our reopening plan at elementary allowed for in-person teaching four out of the five days, which, which we think is pretty progressive and in regard to providing continuity and providing face time with students. But we still, because it's a hybrid, are built, built our schedule with the confines or the requirements that it's still half the amount of in-person time. So the, the other time that students would be participating in their learning would be outside of school. So we were really trying to, and the structure that Kara is, is showing here in regard to this, the asynchronous work template that she's sharing, is, is in line with the values and the goals that you described, Suzie, and that we're trying to take the pressure off of parents in that this is a, something that is accessible. It's in one space. It gives kind of, it gives kind of targets for time where we want kids to be able to access, you know, to the degree that they can developmentally, right? And so that's just some initial kind of touch points that we thought were critical in regard to the elementary build. But I'll, I'll turn it back over to you, Kara. So.
No, I mean, I think, I think the only thing I, I would add is just, like Doug said, we're just, we're dealing with limited time. And so it was really a matter of just reprioritizing what we wanted to, how we wanted to maximize that time when kids were in front of their teachers. And if you think about a, a typical school day, you know, kids aren't, you know, on being directed by their teacher the entire school day. There is time for practical application. There is time for independent practice. There's time for, you know, maybe going on one of our, our digital resources. But we didn't, we didn't want to waste any, I don't want to say waste, but we didn't want to have any time that could be done at home, done in school, because the time is so limited. So, you know, I, I think that this is a big topic. Like I said, we're, we're, we're hearing feedback from our teachers. We're hearing feedback from our parents. We're trying to get better at this each week. We're trying to, you know, but it really comes down to consistency, consistency in the opportunities that we're, we're putting out for our students. And the way the curriculum planning meetings are set up on Wednesday is whole grade levels of teachers across the district with a, a block dedicated to the live instruction and what, what's being focused on that week, a block dedicated to the asynchronous planning. And then there is a block for practical application with colleagues to be able, for teachers to be able to go back, probably more so with their building-based teams and, and do the plan and continue the planning there. So I hope that adds some clarity. Oh, I think you're muted, Suzie.
Am I back?
Yep, yep.
Okay. I think the templates, to me, seems like it would be really helpful. I would imagine that for the younger grades, they, it's still difficult for them to kind of independently do that work. But if it looks the same every day, you would think over time, or, yeah, I guess every day, over time, the kids will get more and more used to it and may, maybe will be able to operate a little bit more independently.
Yeah.
And so I think that, I think that goes a long way with kind of creating a template where the kids are doing the same thing and the expectation is the same. So that, I, I feel like that was a, a win. And so I was a little surprised when I saw some criticism of that approach, but then was reminded of, we were really trying to kind of relieve that burden for working parents. And, and now it's kind of back.
Yeah.
Young kids.
And I think I'm showing a blank, you know, but I think, I think we're trying to keep expectations within reason. And I think that the teachers know their students best, their developmental readiness best. And just looking at a completed template here for this week from, from kindergarten, a lot of reasonable, you know, just really communicating to parents, here's what we're working on, here's, here's our focus, here's what could be reinforced at home. Like one of the activities is around name writing practice, letter review, roll and write the letters. And that, you know, it's giving ideas to parents about how they can reinforce in a, in a more hands-on approach as well. Because I think we were definitely hearing, you know, that, that's just how, how our kids learn, learn best. And I think there was definitely burden in the spring as well with, with the Zoom calls. I think that the Zoom calls were, were, were a good opportunity. But then sometimes they were, they were a struggle for parents to have a set time to, to get the student on a Zoom and, you know, whether or not the student was as engaged as they could be. But this also offers, minus the scheduled specialist block and the live specialist block, it really gives families flex too of when they can, you know, work with their, work with their children or set up learning times for their students. Because we were also trying to be conscientious of the elementary level and, and kids being in all different spots when they weren't, when they aren't with their teachers, whether they're in a, you know, a pod or, or daycare or with a relative. We're trying to make it pretty user-friendly for a, a wide range of care providers.
I just had a quick question with the template. So when the kids are working after school and following, say, on Monday, what are the expectations that the work is being done? I mean, is there tracking or is it, you know, are the kids expected to actually do it? Is there any pressure on them or the parents to make sure it's happening?
So I think, I think that everyone's feeling the pressure right now. And I think that these are the conversations that continue, you know, that we're, that I know, you know, principals are having, teachers are having around feedback and accountability. And I think we're trying to, you know, especially at the elementary level, it's less about a grading system and it's more about, you know, do our, do our students have the skills that they need to progress? And, and are we giving them opportunity to master the standards at their grade level? And our report card reflects that as well. It's a standards-based report card. So I think, you know, the advice I think we're all giving, I, I'm sure I'm speaking for teachers when they're talking to parents. Like if, if your child's crying and stressed and it's causing chaos in your home, then we've got to rework something and we've got to adjust and we've got to talk that through and figure out where the roadblocks are. So that's the thing that I can't stress enough, you know, because I, I have had people ask me, like, will we be penalized if we don't? I mean, the last thing we're looking to do is cause more stress and, and pressure to, to, you know, to, to all families right now.
And, and what's really interesting is, is we've gotten feedback at all levels. And we'll get to middle and high school. I know we're talking a lot about elementary. We'll get to middle and high. But we've gotten a lot of feedback at all levels. And the, the feedback has been consistent, you know, in that some parents are, and, and students are asking us to go faster, like we're not moving fast enough for them. And, and others are saying, you know, we're moving too fast. So in, in our reopening meeting this past week, one of our principals, Matt Carter, had said, you know, we're kind of, we're working right now to find our, our sweet spot, you know, where we're kind of learning how to meet the, the range of needs for families and students that have been out of school for a long time and that we're getting back. And, and, you know, some students are jumping right in and, and are asking for more and others are taking more time. And so, and we want to be respectful of the needs of, of students and families and the feedback that we're getting. But we are getting that range and it's interesting, you know? And so one of the things that we've talked about is trying to keep expectations high and, but working with individual students and families to try to understand how to support, right? And so that's a piece.
Any other questions on elementary before I move on? You're good? Okay. And then kind of along a similar theme, I think, I think the asynchronous piece or the, or the non-teacher-directed time is, is areas of, of feedback and, you know, concern that we're working through across the levels. So at the Galvin, I know one of the topics that we, we've been talking around is, talking about is the team time that's happening within the remote schedule, when students are remote and they had that end of, end of the day team time and block. And so, you know, I'll just give a little, again, I feel like I'm more reporting out. We met with the team again today and I know they're continuing to look at the schedule, get feedback from teachers, get feedback from parents and continue to make things better each week. But the, the structure of the team time is really meant to be a time for students, for asynchronous learning, for independent work, for a time to, to catch up on assignments that they might not have completed. There is work on a project. It is a time where students might be up for special education services or music opportunities. And it's also a time for students to check in with teachers. And I think the thing that we're working on across, really more so middle and high, is, is just thinking about different strategies to organize that time for students. I think all of our, I think students can have a hard time with that. You know, the executive functioning skills connected with, with time management and organizing and knowing what's due when. So I think we're, we're trying to allow time for, to develop those independent work habits, but also have some safety nets there too. And I know that, that the teachers at the Galvin are available for check-ins. You know, if students are done with their work, that would be, you know, I think the situation right now is that the workload isn't really what it might, you know, it will be in the next couple of weeks. So if we think about our timeline, we're definitely, you know, behind. We started late. We had Phase One run 10 days later. Our Phase One training with our, our teaching staff ran 10 days later than we would have normally started. So we're really on a timeline that's a little bit delayed right now. And I think that we're also seeing the delay in terms of what we're putting out for, for workload and assignments. And, and that was, that was intentional. I think administratively, we've, we've talked a lot, you know, I think we focused a lot on making sure our teachers were okay as they, they made the return from the spring, making sure that they had everything that they needed through our Phase One training plan. And then we, I know we were advising to, to, to take it slower with the students. We didn't really know how students were going to come back in terms of their social, emotional needs and this, this big readjustment from not being in school for so many months. So I think, you know, there was a, a heavy focus on building community, which is a focus in, in a normal school year too. But we, we just wanted to account for the, the time, the additional time that that takes to, to do that virtually. So I think we will see in the next couple of weeks differences in terms of, of what students are, are expected to, to engage with, to complete and, and that that team time might be used more effectively. I do know, you know, again, I keep going back to the communication piece. I think if, if the team time isn't working for, for your student, I, I think there's some students who, who utilize the time and then it just allows them to have, you know, get off the screen and have the rest of the day to do other things. I think that's important to some parents. But I, but I think if, if the time isn't being utilized well, I would definitely encourage that communication with, with teachers to help structure the time. Because I know, I know that's something that we're, we'll be talking a lot about moving forward. I think I hit on all that. Any questions on the Galvin team time?
So Kara, this, this one is near and dear to my heart.
Yeah.
I've, I've got kids living it. And I just, I, I wonder, you know, I think what you've done for the elementary school with the asynchronous learning, while there has been some criticism of it, gives some kind of additional structure for those hours where our kids aren't in school. And for our middle school kids who are starting an hour later and getting done an hour earlier and if they're not using team time, getting done even earlier than that, it feels like there's an opportunity for there to be some optional work. I mean, I know we, like, I'm not thinking extra credit. Like I just, I, I would love to see as things ramp, because as you said, like, things will change over time. But without homework, so, you know, we're not doing homework right now. And then not having kind of some additional optional work for kids who don't have questions and don't need that team time for something else. It wouldn't, it would be nice to see some options that parents could point to their kids and say, okay, you're not using this team time. I want you to do this keyboarding exercise. Or I want you to practice cursive so that you know how to sign a check, even though my kids are in eighth grade. You know, like, or is there a writing assignment? Or could we watch, you know, CNN 10 and write about something that's going on? Like I, I just don't know exactly what it is. But I think as a parent, if, if I could point my kid during team time to a list of things and say, pick one of those and do that today. It could go a long way. And so I, I don't know if there's discussion about trying to do that at the middle school level to help fill that gap. But I definitely, I don't think I'm alone in feeling like team time isn't something that's working for my kid today.
Yeah.
Weeks I may have a different, I may have a different mind.
Yeah, I think that's an important piece, just in terms of, of timing too. And I, and I think it's something that we're going to continue to keep an eye on. And, you know, what I, what I've been part of in conversations and what I've actually seen put out is actually even, even today, is just around teachers structuring it for students and maybe pushing out a Google Form, like, you know, how are you going to use your team time today? You can go, you know, to this, to this teacher, to that teacher, to that teacher. And there's a little bit of an accountability piece, I think, for students to know that they, they, you know, need to, to show up. They could, they have some choice in terms of where they think they need to go, but they, they do need to show up somewhere. It is time on learning. But I think, I, I hear what you're saying, just in terms of parents who are fielding, like, I'm done with all my work, I don't have anything to do, therefore I'm done at whatever time. You know, I, I think we can continue to, to talk about how to, how to structure that and provide some options. But I do, but I do think that timing will be important, just thinking about how things will progress in the next couple of weeks.
I agree.
Thank you.
All right, great. And then I'll just move on to the high school. Again, you know, it's kind of similar topics around the asynchronous time and just really trying to talk about strategies to help structure the time for students when they're not in live teaching opportunities with their, with their teachers. So we, we checked in with the, the high school team today as well. And it was, it was good timing. They had their instructional leadership team meeting happening today. And just, they wanted to just highlight some of the things that, that they're working on and, and hoping to further refine in the plan. And that would be just around, you know, again, greater consistency in terms of expectations, posting work, deadlines, workload. They're continuing to, to assess that. And then just how the weeks are being structured with the schedule. They went from what used to be four to five lessons to three longer, what, what they're hoping to be more, more rigorous and deeper learning for, for students within, within the schedule as it is right now. So just making sure that the time is really structured well and maximized for when, when students are with their teachers. And again, just to stress on communication. I mean, that's going to be everything this year. I think as we work, you know, to, to try to make the best out of our schedules and our time with our students, I think we really just can't stress enough the need for families and, and teachers to collaborate and to troubleshoot and to talk about what's working for students and what isn't, and then adjust as we go. So I think those were some things that they were working on in terms of planning. The PM learning blocks have definitely come up a lot. We've, we're hearing that from kind of a similar piece to, to the Galvin in terms of the, the time and do students need to report. I know that the high school's done a lot of work recently, even more so on, on defining the PM learning blocks and really breaking out the structure and what it means for, for teachers when they're in-person, working with small groups, when they're Zooming with students, when they're in their PLCs, when they have their prep and planning. So I know that they've, they've worked hard to try to structure those blocks more. And then think about how to, again, engage the kids, schedule them. Teachers are reaching out to students. That's the expectation that, that kids are meeting with, with student, with their teachers during that time. And again, a similar, like, form-type structure of, of putting out kind of an invitation of sorts to students to say, you know, how are you going to use your time? You could use it for, you know, review of it, review of material for our task. You could, you know, check in with a teacher. You could finish up this project. But just trying to keep showing students how they can use the time so that it's used efficiently. And, and I think it's, it's, it can be challenging for high school students. I think they, they will work at different times. But, you know, the, the piece of not engaging in those PM learning blocks is that, you know, if they, they get to a point where they need help, the, the access to the teacher isn't there at, you know, 11 o'clock at night, if that's when they, you know, are getting their work done. So I think we're really trying to, to push students to take advantage of that time and, and, you know, for teachers to continue their outreach to try to, to pull kids in. I don't know if you want to add to anything?
No, I think we're good. I think, I think we have one more slide on the quarantine.
Yep. Yeah, so that, that was the big, that's been a lot of what the conversation at the high school is around refining. I don't know if there's any questions related to the high school before we move on? Yep, Suzie?
Sorry. The bullet that said moving from four to five lessons to three more rigorous ones per week, for weekly planning, is that with the hope of using the two days in-person and the one and Wednesday synchronous time slot to teach those lessons so that the, the, the learning, you know, the fourth and fifth lesson doesn't necessarily have to be kind of taught on their own? Because that is some of the feedback that I'm hearing at the school, is that kids are feeling like I have to teach this to myself? Is, so is that kind of what that, that changes?
Yeah, well, I think we're, I think that's the plan. We're getting there. And I, and I think most teachers have been able And I think most teachers have been able to kind of use that time that way, Susie. And so, but but I think we're getting there, yes.
Okay.
So and I would say that if if students are having difficulty, you know, as you say, teaching themselves, then I would urge students who who might be watching or families that might be watching to just let the teachers know, you know? And and because the teachers are really the ones that that are able to adapt and adjust, right? And and they're working kind of triple time to do that. So just please, I would urge people to let let their teachers know and and let the administration at the high school know if that's the case. All right?
I just have one question. I, you know, could you be more specific about the feedback that you are getting maybe from teachers? At at all the levels, you know, like, where are they struggling with? Do they see room for improvement in different areas?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's really just about just clarity of actually. I think everyone just really wants to know, you know, what am I supposed to do when? How is this, you know, how is the schedule going to work work out for me? So we've, I think a lot of the conversations have been around just clarity of expectations. And right now, it's just such a different environment. Kids are in, they're not, one cohort's home, one cohort's in. It's really a lot of conversation around, you know, what are my responsibilities? Because I think everyone, at the end of the day, just really wants to do a good job for our students. And and they, and that's where I think the stress is, because it's just a totally different learning environment than any of us are used to.
Yeah, I mean, I just feel like the teachers that I've heard from, they're just working in overdrive.
Yeah.
Teachers are working more now than they ever have, right?
I know.
And so they're they're learning new technology. They're accommodating students in three different settings. Not just two different settings, three different settings. So we have students that are in kind of the full remote program. We have students that are in the hybrid program, sometime in person, sometime they need to be, you know, they're learning independently. And they have a synchronous day, right? And so teachers, I, you know, they're perfectionists, right? And they, they, I would argue, they don't want to show, they don't want to let anyone down, right? So they are working, you know, double and triple time to try to meet everyone's needs. And I think probably the most important thing that they need to hear from us is that we know it and will support them. But, you know, I think the community also needs to know that communication is the key, right? We're not in an in-person model, right? We didn't, we're not back in an in-person model. You know, so when we, when someone reaches out to us and says, you know, now that we're back, you know, we need to kind of accelerate the curriculum in this way, well, we're not back. You know, we have, you know, 12 to 15 kids in a room that are socially distant, you know, on modified schedules. So we're, I think, teachers are moving as quickly as they possibly can. But I think, like Kara said, I think communication is the key. And if if parents have questions and if students have questions, I think I would just urge people just to keep those lines of communication open and keep the questions coming. That's really an important piece.
And do you guys have a support sort of tool that teachers can use if they have questions or concerns as well about maybe what they're doing at that time? And, I mean, it's, you know, in terms of communication, it should be for them as well to make sure that, you know, they they're making progress or they can manage whatever new system we have going on right now, because it's just doesn't resemble anything they're used to.
Exactly, and I think that's why we keep administratively, just pushing the collaboration side of things, because, you know, we've said it a lot, everyone's work is really transparent right now. What everyone, the schedules are, you know, kids are home half the day, doing their learning at home. You know, so we just have have said, like, we're, we are literally all in this together and we're better planning it out together. And we're better maximizing our time collaborating. So that's why I think, you know, at the elementary level, we talked about the need to have that have those meetings on Wednesdays. At the secondary level, the principals have prioritized PLC time with, you know, their colleagues and curriculum coordinators and department meetings, just trying to have touch points for for people to just, you know, support each other.
Right.
Because it's really, it's really necessary.
Yeah, and then once they continue on, hopefully, you know, it'll just be a little bit more seamless. Obviously, it's a bumpy road at the moment, and obviously goes without saying, everybody's doing the best they can.
Yep, I think that's an important piece. So in terms of the quarantine piece, you know, one of the things that I had said that I would I would get for Kara is just a data point. So right now in the district, when students come in contact with a COVID positive person, could be a parent, could be a relative, it could be someone at school, right, who who might test positive. So far, just as a context piece in regard to that statement, we've only had one student who has tested positive, and they were not in school at the time, they were on their off time in terms of the hybrid learning schedule. And that was at the middle school level. We sent out, I sent out an email on that the Monday before this past Monday. And so thank you for the feedback, for those that were able to provide feedback for to me. And I think that that was helpful in 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 future correspondence that we will have with the community. But one of the questions that I got was, in in future correspondence, could we please let the community know what school the student is in who tested positive? And we can absolutely do that. So thank you for that feedback. But in regard to the quarantine education, regard to students that need to quarantine, students will quarantine, and they'll be assigned to quarantine through the Board of Health. And that's done in collaboration with our school nurses. When students go out to quarantine, which can be up to 14 days, right? What we're doing is we're providing work for them as if they were going to be out of school, or for to be ill, or if they were out for any given family reason or anything like that. And so we are going to provide assignments for them, and we're going to have someone from the buildings check in with them a few times a day to make sure that they're making effective progress. You know, a lot of, the majority of our schedules, especially at the secondary level, allow for kids to fall right into synchronous learning on Wednesdays, at the middle, Thursday and Friday. And so it's the in-person check-in on Monday and Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday, depending on their grade level, that is a piece that we really need to kind of look at. One of the things that has come up, and one of the things that I told Kara we would share tonight, is, you know, one of the big questions is, well, how many students do we have quarantining? Right now, in the district, at all levels combined, we have eight students that are quarantining. You know, and so, and I think teachers and administrators are doing, are learning how to kind of adapt and learn what students need while they're out on quarantine. And they've been in touch with with them, and they've been in touch with their families to try to meet their needs. And teachers are also, have been instrumental in this, you know? I know we've gotten a question about, can, if my son or daughter needs to quarantine, can they kind of jump into a remote cohort? And the answer there is is no, because those are class sizes that are fixed, right? And and it would also be disruptive, not only to the class, because the students that are quarantining would be in and out, right? And they may not be aligned in regard to the work that's happening in their regularly scheduled class and schedule that they would fall back into, right? So I covered, I think, the first bullet, second bullet?
Yep, I think it's, I think it's just really a matter of of just all of us thinking at each level about what makes the most sense. We've talked a lot about quarantine is a, you know, a two-week period of time. Pre-COVID, that would have been a really extensive amount of time for a student to be out of school. So we're just trying to prioritize, to make it reasonable and to prioritize some some live learning as well as some asynchronous work for families. And again, it depends case by case, depending on how well students are physically to engage and whether or not they're healthy enough to engage. So I think it's just, it's going to be, continue to be a case by case basis that we troubleshoot administratively, which is what we've done so far. You know, when we've had this situation arise, we've worked with building principals, worked with our our nursing staff and and made a plan and just communicated with families throughout.
So that's it? I don't know if anyone has any other questions before we transition to Parent University?
Okay, thanks. I just want to get the Catherine's here. Catherine Dingra is here with us tonight. And I just want to make sure that I have the right, if I just keep going ahead.
I think Ian will be able to switch to Parent University, switch slides. So while WCAT is switching presentations or slide decks to our Parent University, I can just share a little bit about what brought about Parent University and why it might not, you haven't seen Parent University in the fall before, and why we're, we are where we are and why we're talking about Parent University. And so one of the things that has really been critical for us is to really, to take every opportunity that we can to not only connect with students, but to connect with the community as well. So with with the kind of the loss of time that in the spring, where we were out of school for 61 days, where students were learning remotely, and now coming back in the fall, one of the things that is important to us is to really just try to reconnect, right? Reconnect with families, reconnect with with students, and and kind of rekindle relationships, right? One of the things that we miss is is the relationships that we've had with families in regard to meetings that we would have weekly with with WEF, with our PTO presidents. We were able to interact so much in when we were in person, and that's been, that's been a loss for us. And so we've, we got together and we were talking about the possibility of doing a fall Parent University to try to support families around topics that they might be working with or interested in learning about. And but also to take the opportunity for us to really reconnect. So so Catherine Dingra is here tonight, and and she's been working with us at at Central Office and trying to create these offerings for the community.
Yeah, so I can take it away. I'm seeing if our presentation is being shared.
And so it's up in studio, Catherine?
Oh, and I can't share it with the public?
So the public, I believe, can see it.
Not on the Zoom, we can't see it on the Zoom. Oh, there we go.
You can see it on the Zoom now?
Okay, you can see it on the Zoom. So you can see that first slide that we really were so excited about our past March Parent University that had to close down. And we really were thinking about now more than ever, do parents need the support to engage and support their students' learning? So we took some of those resources that we already had due to the generosity of the Quaker Bank and the Wake Up Coalition and some of our other partners and said, we really want to support parents. So the first thing we did was we sent out a district-wide survey to get an interest in what parents might want as far as workshops and keynote speakers. So we got those results back, and we planned an exciting menu that's going to be offered the last week of October, over six days. So starting October 26 through November 2. So first, I'm going to cover the three keynotes. So we brought, we're bringing in three keynotes. Our first one, and they're all national level keynotes. So we really pooled our resources and got some great speakers that we're really excited about. The first one, the first big keynote will be on October 28 at 7:00 p.m., and that's Katie Greer. She, I've seen her speak before, she's excellent. She's really going to support parents on their ways, their students are using technology in safe and healthy ways, and ways to monitor the remote learning, complexities of social media being part of it, and balancing screen time, including things like video games. So she's going to give parents a lot of concrete tools and kind of warnings on what's, what's, you know, okay, and what what things and what social media they really want to monitor as their teens and tweens get older. Our next level speaker is Susan Pollak. She's actually out of Harvard Medical School. She's going to really focus on parents and taking care of themselves and understand and kind of relieving some of that parent guilt we're all feeling right now, trying to work, trying to support our learners, and really understand that connection to how we are reflects on supporting our students. So giving us some strategies and abilities to reconnect with our our families and what's going to make for a solid learning and living environment for our children. So and then our last keynote is going to be on November 2. He is actually wrapping up our Parent University series. And this is Raul Fernandez out of Boston University. And I know he's done a lot of professional development work for the district and gets rave reviews. And he's really going to talk about some of the important issues that are being brought up right now around equity, diversity, and inclusion, and how we can foster this not only in our own homes, but our school environment. And he's going to give us some great tips and foster great discussion. So what's great about all these keynotes is there's going to be a way to ask questions ahead of time, and there'll be a Q and A at the end with the keynotes. And then a part that we're really excited about is, in addition to these keynotes, there are going to be smaller interactive workshops that people can sign up for. And this is all going to be available on the Parent University page on the Public Schools website. So you can go to that Parent University, sign up for some of these smaller interactive workshops that are going to be available on Monday and Tuesday, the 26th and 27th. And they're going to be a slate of workshops, both at 7:00 and 8:00 p.m. each night. And some of the topics that we're going to cover, a lot of them are led by our own district specialists, some around digital learning, so really talking about some of the things we talked about tonight, how to supervise that asynchronous time for your elementary school learner, really understanding Google Classroom. I know myself as a parent of middle schoolers, that's something I'm still trying to wrap my head around. So some in district experts are going to lead us through interactive workshops, executive functioning during the asynchronous learning, and parental monitoring and restrictions on Apple devices. So I know a lot of our students, especially at the Galvin, are on these Zoom all day and how to monitor their other devices that they may have, and even little ones on their iPad. So Andrew Sodroni is actually putting together a great workshop based on things he's learned as a parent who's also working. And then we have social emotional topics, typical or troubled, is this typical behavior? Or is this something where I might want to get more help? Really understanding anxiety with Kate Hirschman. Really looking at building protective factors during this COVID time and how you can reduce the likelihood of your student engaging in risky behavior. So that's actually a workshop Suzanne Burns and I are going to be working on together. And then some of the other topics, supporting your child's transition to kindergarten, college planning in the era of COVID-19. Really interesting topics and insights that some of our guidance counselors have around that. How to advocate for your child, that special ed workshop, how to help your student with math. And we'll have a few other workshops coming on. But we're really excited about this opportunity, and we hope a number of parents participate.
Thank you, Catherine. Much appreciated. Bob, are you with us?
I'm here, Doug.
It's good. I love the basement shot there, Bob, via Zoom. And so I'm wondering, Bob, if you could just give us a quick update around, you know, where we are and the progress that we've made in the last few weeks around HVAC and the work of DPW and yourself? And then we're going to jump into you, myself, and Christine are going to finally get to our budget update.
Of course. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. As Doug mentioned, I'll just give a brief overview on the HVAC work that we've been up to. So two weeks ago, at our last, the last special school committee meeting on September 25, we had representatives from Bala that joined the call and reported their suggestions and recommendations to improve airflow to combat against COVID. Since this time over the past two weeks, in conjunction with the DPW Building Division, we've been combing through the school facilities, really for a second time. The DPW already went through mechanicals once prior to students and staff entering the buildings. So since since then, the DPW has made some some more mechanical repairs and confirmed any recommendations that Bala has suggested. The DPW has also opened unit dampers further to allow for more airflow in classrooms. So kind of some, a few specifics of some of the schools at Greenwood, right? We've discussed, there's there's really no full enclosed HVAC system there. So we've added window fans in each classroom to allow for fresh air to be brought in and stale air to be exhausted. So we've added window fans in each classroom to allow for fresh air to be brought in and stale air to be exhausted. In to date, we've also distributed a hundred air purifiers to interior classrooms in Uset, the high school, the Woodville, Dolberg, and in every room at Greenwood and Doyle. So we have more on order. They're just a little delayed right now as you you guys can imagine with the demand that that is out there. So after going through all the mechanicals for really the second time, the DPW has confirmed that the Doyle, the Greenwood, Walton, Woodville, and Galvin are all function operational per their design. The Dolberg is also fully functional. There's a few exhaust fans that they've found that need to be updated. So those parts are on order and should be complete within the next week or so. At the high school, really one of the the our oldest and except for the Greenwood, oldest building in the in the district, they have a third-party contractor Siemens who's been reviewing the pneumatics over the past week and they should be finishing this week. So pneumatic controls, I don't know if everyone's aware, I'll just kind of give a a high-level overview. So with pneumatics, they use compressed air to receive and send signals to the controls of HVAC to allow for heat or AC to come on. So, you know, with a school that old, there's there's some some issues and some pinholes that this contractor has been trying to find to resolve. Now, this doesn't mean that that fresh air isn't being brought into the rooms, which it is. This this evaluation is just looking at the controls to try to get a better temperature setting. So that's really what's going on at the high school. But, you know, our schools are looking good and DPW has been, you know, they've been great partners to work with and and they've got a lot on their plate as well, trying to get everything everything working to combat against COVID.
Thank you Bob, I appreciate it. So so next, to close out, kind of the superintendent comments and and remarks. Myself, Christine Buffagnar, our school business administrator, and Bob Shiroli are going to do a very quick WPS budget update in regard to kind of where we are at this moment in time. And so, you know, I included this slide. This slide or was sent is very similar to the second slide and that we've used in our reopening plans, right? Again, it is to keep the focus on on this on what is kind of critical, which is this critical idea that, you know, we are still in a pandemic, right? We're still working every day to kind of keep safety at the forefront of everything that we're doing, right? And so as we continue to offer remote and in-person teaching in the hybrid and full remote plans, safety, which includes hand hygiene, social distancing, face covers, right? And so as well as kind of cleaning schedules, disinfecting, and we're doing a lot of extra work to make sure that all of our facilities and everything is as safe as it can be, right? And and one of the things that is critical as we've gotten an uptick in in kind of the COVID virus around in surrounding communities and in the Wakefield community, one of the things that our nurses kind of remind us every day is that we need to remain vigilant around the safety precautions that we've been taking so far because they work, right? They work. They've they've kept a lot of us safe and healthy and and we need to continue to work on that, right? And so, you know, as as we kind of are looking at budgets, one of the things that's critical as well is that our goals continue to focus on relationships, student engagement, student well-being, academic as well as academic progress, right? And and we don't want to lose a a critical part of this, which is a a focus on equity and core values as we as we work to support all families and students during this time. So what I'd just like to start off by saying, in the spring, when we closed schools, right? We were, you know, everything shut down, right? And so we were able to kind of reallocate some of our resources. And I would argue that I think Christine Buffagnar and Bob Shiroli were very, very quick to to really think about what we would need to open school in the fall, in whatever way that we might be able to do that. So in FY twenty, in the spring of FY twenty, so from March to June, we were we reallocated resources and and Bob was able to purchase personal protective equipment for our teachers and our staff, additional cleaning supplies. We were able to put additional money and to start to look at what we needed for Plexiglas as well as disinfect disinfecting equipment, right? I think Bob was was one of the first facilities managers to bring in these these disinfecting. What is the correct term for them Bob?
The electrostatic sprayers.
The electrostatic sprayers, right? And so and and he bought them so early that when we wanted to buy more, they were sold out across the state. So I think he that was kind of a it was good foresight on on his part and and we really saw the the benefits of the early planning. And Christine also worked to kind of make sure that Bob was able to get the resources that he needed to plan ahead. And we also were able to purchase additional technology to support our instructional model that included licenses as well. That's before we closed the fiscal year of FY twenty and we moved into FY twenty-one.
So that brings us to twenty-one. So twenty-one, as we all know, our budget was the appropriation that school committee voted on was then reduced by four hundred thousand dollars by the town. So then we allocated that budget in three ways. As you'll see, the majority of that goes to personnel. So it's teachers, it's staff, it's clericals, custodians, it's extra duty work, it's interventionists. All of that lives in that in the first line. Then it's contractual services for everything that we have to hire for sped, for transportation. And then the the third line is materials and supplies to everything to support what we're doing. It's the smallest line of them all, which brings us to the the total budget for twenty-one, forty-four, five, twenty-nine, five, twelve. And then, as you'll see, that eighty percent of our budget is is personnel. So who what does that mean for us right now? So right now on payroll, we have active FTEs of four hundred and eighty staff. As you'll know, in order to keep the school lunch program solvent, we had to furlough fourteen cafeteria workers because our our day looks a little bit different than it used to. We're hoping to bring them back when we are hopefully fully back. We have three teacher vacancies at this point. We're hoping to to see what we can do to fill those. The special ed position was posted and will be filled soon. That was due to retirement at the high school. We have twelve parent educator vacancies. Those are critical and eight right now will be posted and filled. As you know, we have ten remote teaching positions that were filled, five at the high school and five at the elementary. We granted eleven leaves of absence, some paid some for the COVID relief grant, the FF-CRA, Families First, for the that only goes until December. And then we had about six who took unpaid leave of that leaves of absence due to family obligations. We have four new FTEs in the district due to specifically due to COVID nineteen. There are one-year appointment, two custodial staff, one nurse position, and one an ESL position at the elementary schools. They've been critical so far in order to do our work. That brings us to the big ticket items is what we've been spending out of this fiscal year, not even what we've done to prepare from twenty, this is just right now from July on. PPE and facilities was two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. That's everything from cleaning materials to N ninety-five masks. And then overtime custodial costs because we are cleaning now more than ever, as you all know. We've also had to make some significant investments in our building maintenance and supply lines. We had to do the Bala report, significant investment in screens and windows, filters, air purifiers, and the storage containers. In order to socially distance, we had to move the desks and and bookcases and some of the things in the classrooms out to the storage containers. And as you all know, teachers love their materials, so that I'm sure was struggling for some of them to do that. Remote learning is costing right now approximately six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the ten remote teachers and we have one remote paraprofessional. The technology resources, we made a significant investment in this. Everyone in the district has a Zoom license, the Chromebooks. We are very proud to say that we'll be by the end of this month, between K and grade eight, we'll have one-to-one devices for all of our students. So that's pretty impressive. Hotspots for those families that didn't have internet, we made sure that everyone had access to that, including some of our Metco families received hotspots. Again, the two the two new custodians and the one new nurse and our our daily health app that everyone in the district is every day when they come to work saying if they have any symptoms. So that brings us to date, one million four hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. That's a that's a crazy big number and that's only to October thirteenth. That's just fiscal twenty-one.
Just twenty-one, okay.
So I know everyone talks about how we've got this one-time COVID relief grant money. And what that breaks down to is the CARES Act, which was about a hundred and two thousand dollars. And we had to, we were pleased to share that with our non-publics. Our COVID relief grant, which has to be spent by December, and trust me, it will be if it's not already, that was split between PPE and facilities and technology. And then we got that, we were all so pleased, we got the technology grant for remote learning, sixty-six thousand. That was specifically for Chromebooks and cameras. We received the the West the WEF Technology Grant also for cameras. And we have been so fortunate to receive some so many generous community gifts. So that brings our one-time COVID money just over a million dollars. So as you can see, we all know from basic math, we're in the negative. And that's just to date.
So I I think what's important to note here is that we are keeping track of every dollar that we spend for COVID-related expenses. And that includes technology, it includes any protective equipment that we need to purchase. It includes, you know, Plexiglas, storage units, anything that we can kind of, we're keeping track of this to apply for new grants or new rounds of grants and and money that may be available via the federal government or the state to reimburse school districts to offset these costs, right? And so we're working very closely with Tom Walsh at the town as well as town administrator Steve Mayo. And and we're pretty confident that we're going to be able to recoup a lot of these costs. I don't know if we're going to be able to recoup all of these costs, but but we're planning on being reimbursed to to a large degree. And so that's kind of an ongoing kind of thing that we're working on. And one of the things that I want to say, I'm particularly pleased and, you know, like Bob had the foresight to purchase early and purchase often the things that he thought we would need. Christine also worked with some of our with Jeff Jeff Weiner and applied for the technology grant through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and secured a grant which was not, we didn't know if we were going to be eligible for this, but through her hard work and I think thoughtful grant-writing skills, we were able to kind of get sixty-six thousand, sixty-six thousand dollars. We were also, we've been supported, and I know Christine mentioned this overwhelmingly supported by WEF and as well as community gifts that, you know, equate to about a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars as well. But as Christine noted, we're still at this point, on October fourteenth, we're in the negative four hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars.
Thank you for that. So we just have a slide about that Bob can speak to specifically the investment to date for facilities.
Thanks Christine. So a lot of these bullet points will kind of reiterate what Christine and Doug just touched upon, but I'll just go through them. So to to date, any facility improvement and new costs that we've we've incurred? We've we've hired the two full-time custodians, they're both on one-year contracts. You know, our hope is that we would like to retain them going forward if if we have this this new normal of cleaning and upkeeping the schools to this to this current standard. You know, the the additional bodies definitely help to both have people there when others are on vacation or sick, but also just the additional, I don't want to say burden, but just the additional duties that that our custodians are are experiencing day in and day out. We we have at the current preventive maintenance schedule, we have two filter changes per year. But with the higher MERV rated filters that have been recommended and that we've also installed, this almost or really does double the cost for for our filters to around forty thousand dollars a year to for the two filter changes, so about twenty twenty thousand dollars each time we change filters in the district. We've also done updated our windows and window screens. You know, the screens at the high school, there's four hundred and fifty-eight of them. So that costs roughly forty thousand dollars just for the just for the high school screens. And then we've gotten all the all the other windows and screens across the district working with the recommendations that we open the windows to allow fresh air and to combat against COVID. As Christine spoke, the PPE and supplies that we've purchased, you know, it it all depends. Does the does the future hold? Are we going to have to continue purchasing PPE? And for how long? You know, this is going to be additional cost that we we haven't haven't planned for. And also the the supplies such as disinfectant sanitizer, paper towels that we're that we're going to continue to go through. And again, is this the new normal or are things going to slow down? You know, it's hard to tell, but these are all things that we need to look at and and try to plan for that that we haven't in the past for for our budget. And, you know, with that, the deep cleanings, our overtime costs, you know, continue to to go up with the the deep cleanings that we were doing to disinfect the schools. So these deep cleanings, yes, are keeping us safe and and, you know, hitting the surfaces multiple times a day, but also on weekends, on Saturdays, we're doing deep cleaning. We have our our custodians coming in dirt between the cohorts and elementary school to assist with the cleanings. So that that adds up over time. And as I spoke earlier, we bought and distributed air purifiers. But with air purifiers, there's there's a maintenance. So you have the year-over-year filter changes on one of the purifiers products that we bought and also the other one that are filterless that that they have, you know, to take them apart and clean them by hand. So there's a labor involved in that. So for our cohorts with the elementary schools, we've brought in a third-party cleaning company. There's eighteen bodies that that we bring in to fit four schools, four elementary schools, four times a week. And that's roughly fifteen hundred dollars a week to bring them in to assist in that hour, hour and a half changeover between cohort A and cohort B. Without these bodies, we wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't be able to disinfect and clean the school properly in that short amount of time. Also, as Christine mentioned, we've purchased a lot of storage containers in order to socially distance classrooms, furniture storage. We've placed these at every school and and that those costs run about nineteen hundred dollars a month. And and last but not least, you know, extraordinary maintenance, you know, to whether it's a private sector or a public sector, you know, buildings, you you need money to upkeep them to a certain standard. And 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 this is where the funds are to do preventive maintenance, but also those unexpected mechanicals that that over time wear out and and will break down that need to be replaced. So that's what we just need to really look at, the funding for preventive maintenance to to continue or extraordinary maintenance to continue upkeep of all mechanicals that we're the work that we're doing and have gotten to this point in all the schools and just moving forward to keep it to keep it going.
So that just brings us to planning for fiscal twenty-two. Again, we had, we just have to, we just put on this slide some of the, the big-ticket items that we have to think about as we're beginning to build our budget for next year. Almost can't believe I'm saying that. You know, to replenish the PPE, the materials that we need, preventative maintenance, like Bob was talking about, potentially retaining the three additional FTEs, retaining the remote positions, depending on what our hybrid learning looks like next year, special ed, out-of-district costs and service providers, and possible COVID testing.
So this brings me to our next slide. When we talk about budget preparation and planning at school committee, we always talk about the knowns and the unknowns, right? And so this is just a very quick overview of some things at this point in time that we think are knowns, right? We, we believe that there's going to be an increase in the needs of our special education students due to the amount of time that we've been out of school, and also the difficulty that we know our students are, are currently having in participating in different learning models, right? So we're anticipating that special education needs will increase, and special education costs will also increase. We're also anticipating that special education evaluations are going to increase. And what we're learning is that, you know, every, every series of, of problems and problem solving, right? Every series of problems kind of bear gifts. Like, we're learning different parts of technology in Zoom, we believe Zoom is here to stay. We're also learning that remote services that we provide for students is going to be something that is going to be here for the, for the future, right? And so that's a piece that we really need to understand and think about how we, we can provide remote service for students. We've discussed addition left TEs in regard to knowns, things that are unknowns, right? You know, counseling and social-emotional learning costs, that, that's a question that we have. You know, out-of-district placements, you know, are, are we going to be reaching a point where students may need to go out of district to, to get the level of service that they may need to be educated? That's something that we've always, that I think we've been really good about, really thinking about building programs in district to keep students in Wakefield. And I think we'll continue with that mindset. But out-of-district placements are really always something that we, we are looking at and, and thinking about how that affects kind of the work that we're doing in the budget. Ongoing COVID-related costs, you know, how long are we going to be in this space where we're teaching students in a hybrid model or a remote model? That's something that is, is unknown at this po, this point in time. And the other piece is state support, right? And so we, we have not yet heard, we've heard rumblings around, you know, new budget numbers, but we haven't seen anything in print just yet in regard to what our circuit breaker numbers are going to look like, or what other state support is going to look like moving forward. While all this is happening, you know, we're trying to maintain this mindset or context that safety and COVID are, are here for the near future, right? But things that we're going to need to look at is really to think about achievement, equity, and, and the gaps that have been created from our current situation. You know, we're going to be looking at human resources, and that's going to be a challenge for us, as it is going to be for all districts, right? How, how can Wakefield continue to retain, recruit, and develop outstanding teachers, administrators, and par educators? Right? That's, that's kind of a, that's one of the most important jobs that we do as, as district administrators, is hire. You know, and we've been fortunate in the last few years in that we've been able to really attract some exceptional talent, both in the administrative and leadership ranks, as well as our curriculum coordinators, and, and our teachers that we've been able to attract to come here to Wakefield as well. And so one of the things that attracts people to, to Wakefield is the exceptional teaching staff that we have in place, right? And so, you know, HR and, and people making the place is something that you're going to hear more about as we move forward into the fall here, and we work on the budget. But we want to also develop a facilities master plan that's not something that's unique. Right now, we have two MSBA grants in play with the state, which we're super fortunate and lucky to have gotten those, the, those grants secured when we, when we did. Because I don't know if districts moving forward will have the opportunity to get that level of support. There'll be more to follow there. We, we need to really look and be thoughtful about special education services and the needs of English, English language learners, because both of those populations are growing. And we need to think about course offerings and, you know, what students are going to need and what we might be able to provide in the area of, of STEAM as well as college experiences at the high school level. More, more to follow on that as well. I don't know if anyone has any questions, but would be happy to answer them at this point in time.
Yep, Colleen?
There might not be answers for these questions yet, because it's still so early, but just something that came to mind when you were, when you were speaking, so. And I wrote it down, so I stay on point here. So given the outlook for 2022 and looking at across all of the town budgets, have you got any advice or sort of just leaning from the town administrator or FinCom that we will need to make more significant cuts even after understanding what our increased needs are across the board, as you just laid out? There's a lot of unknowns, there are some knowns. Are there any town budgets that we know of that have not been so severely impacted? Because the conversation, I believe, will, you know, should happen that there's departments and town budgets that are more impacted than others, and how we shift that, those funds around if possible. And then my, my last question was, we do have a special education fund, and are we talking about, or has the conversation come up, that we would dip into that fund to support the increased SED costs and placements that you just outlined?
So I, I think you asked four questions, or three questions. Let me go back to the first, which is, you know, what guidance have we gotten from the town administrator, right? And so Steve Mayo, and, and has been working very closely with FinCom, and at, at a town council meeting earlier this month, they did some economic forecasting around what they thought was going to happen here in, in Wakefield. And so based on, on kind of that presentation, I think Mr. Mayo is a, a little bit more optimistic than, than Mr. Sherman. But I think that that's, those are the usual kind of roles that they play, you know? But I think that they have been ve, very thoughtful partners to us, and certainly to me. Their guidance has been, you know, I, I think Steve is very optimistic about our recovery. I think he is clear that it's going to take some time to recover, to get back to where we were. And without the state kind of really showing their hand, we won't know how long that's going to take until we hear more from the state. But, you know, I, I think that he was talking about budgets in the presentation that he made to town council, you know, hovering around 2% to 3%. I think Mr. Sherman, if I, if I read the item correctly, and I recall the, the percentage, I think Mr. Sherman is a little bit more, little bit more hawkish on that number, and I think he, I think he's thinking around 1% to 2%. But, you know, I think that that was earlier in the month. And, and again, we're going to be working very closely with them as we develop our budget. And, and they've never been shy to give us feedback around how they think our budget needs to grow, you know? But one of the things that I think has been good about our collaboration with, with FinCom, especially with our FinCom liaisons, is that, you know, there are things that are costs that are not costs at this, on the school side that aren't like really any other department, right? The cost to educate a stu, a student, or the cost to provide services for special education, aren't, it's not like buying, you know, supplies for different departments in, in the town, right? And so it's, it's not that linear. So I'm, I'm optimistic about the, our work moving forward, but that's a little of what we've gotten from guidance from them. In regard to your question about other departments, I will tell you that right now, in this COVID environment, we on the school side are looking at every dollar that we spend. We're looking at every FTE that we have in place. And we're starting off with the question of, you know, is there a better way to do this? Is there a better way to offer service? Is there a way for us to kind of be more creative and innovative in, in ways to save money or to do more with less? That's kind of a standard lens that we kind of go at, really, all of our, all of our costs right now. And so that's a little bit about your second question. In regard to your last question, if I, if, correct me if I'm off, Colleen, but I think you said, you know, moving forward, you know, what, what are our, what are we thinking? Is, is that what you asked? Stabilization fund. And so your question about stabiliz, thank you, Amy. And so your question about stabilization. So we, we think, based on where we are, there's a very strong possibility that we're going to need to access the stabilization fund for special education in the spring. And so that's, you know, you know, how much are we going to need to access that? I mean, that's a question that we need to, we need to really figure out. But a, another part of that is, you know, what, how long we're going to be able to stay in our hybrid plan, right? You know, and so, you know, things change in this environment very quickly, right? So there'll be more to follow in, I think, probably every school committee meeting we have between now and the end of the school year.
Absolutely. I just, I, I wanted to point that out because I think that, you know, we, we talk about it at town meeting. We haven't had to have conversations like this before, and I always feel like we're, we're very fortunate that we have that money set aside. You know, no one would have predicted a time like this, so. I had actually forgotten about it myself, you know? And then when you outlined the, the increased need in special education, just in terms of placements that weren't forecasted for, that normally students may have been able to stay in districts that now need to look elsewhere. It's just, it's just, you know, a comforting piece that we, we have that to look to, so. Thank you. You answered all the questions.
Thank you, Colleen. Other questions?
Suzie, I think you're muted. Oh, you don't have any questions? Okay. Thank you. I, I just wanted to thank you for the informative budget update. I mean, obviously, I know how much work you have all been doing, so thank you so much, Christine, for all your tireless effort, honestly. And, and, you know, it goes without saying that there are many moving parts here. And, you know, I feel like this is the year of the unknowns. So, I mean, I just think it's one day at a time here, but, you know, it's a nice snapshot as to kind of where we're, where we have been and where we're at, and then where we're headed. I guess nobody knows. Chris?
Just kind of thinking out loud and something just pops into my head, and I, have we done a, a cost comparison between hybrid and remote? Which is more expensive?
Hybrid? Hybrid?
So, I mean, we talk about how long can we stay in hybrid? Because the longer we stay in hybrid, the, the more expensive it's going to be. But it's better for the kids, clearly, but.
But hold on, stop right there. I don't know if everyone heard you at home. Say that again?
It is better for the kids.
It's better for kids, right, right, right.
But I, I was curious, you know, but if we, if we had to retreat for a period of time, for a week or two weeks or whatever, it's not going to cost us more. Sometimes when I was listening to you, I, I almost got the feeling that it was going to cost us more money to go back to remote. And I was trying to figure out how that would happen, but not.
No, I don't think I said it would cost more.
You didn't say that, I just, that was just a, just a, that was the feeling I got.
Yep, no. Yeah, I, if we close for a short period of time, I think that the cost benefit would be imperceptible. I think that because, you know, everything would kind of stay as it is. All personnel would stay, would still be, you know, providing food, would still be providing a lot of the services that we're providing, right? It would just be happening remotely. If we were to close, like the governor closed us this past spring, that's a different case scenario, right? And we're not hoping that that happens. And we're thinking that with the safety precautions that we're now, we now have in place, and what we've learned about the virus and how to stay safe, we're hoping that we can, you know, stay in person for some time. Not, not quite, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions in regards to the budget update? Okay, thank you so much for that information. Moving on with the agenda, school, subcommittee reports, finance and facilities, your last one, Chris.
Tomorrow.
Well, I mean, your last report.
My last report, okay. Well, you know, we continue to meet every Thursday morning, 8 o'clock. And the, the meetings have gotten, we've gotten pretty efficient, you know? We're, we're moving along and, and we're, we know the hotspots and, and we're just, Christine's always very well-prepared with her, with her updates.
Her and Bob.
And the, we, we just, we're just plodding along. And it's just, just trying to keep a, a close eye on, on where costs are going, so we, nothing catches us by surprise, so.
Yep, absolutely. I agree, because I'm with you in that. Okay, labor and personnel, Tom?
So actually, the, I don't have a report to give this evening. We have, Labor Subcommittee has been, has been meeting on Tuesdays, similar to the Finance Committee meetings on Thursdays. We will like to defer our report until our, our next meeting, which will be tomorrow night. So we'd like to, with the committee's indulgence, to revise, revise tomorrow night's agenda and push our Subcommittee report until then.
Thank you. Student Services, we did meet on September 30th. We discussed as a group creating some surveys for our special education population. Lynn O'Neil, the Special Ed Director, did join our meeting. And the purpose of these surveys is to get a nice snapshot as to where we stand after the first month or so of school with the remote and the hybrid program. And some topics, I, I believe we're going to try and pinpoint on those surveys are remote learning and support, social-emotional services, as well as English language services. And I'm hoping that these schedules to go out at the end of October. So more to follow on that once we get the results. Labor, Suzie?
You mean policy?
Policy.
Sorry, yes, policy.
That's okay.
Reading the wrong line. I should put my glasses on.
I actually don't have, we haven't met since the last meeting. We've been trying to get a meeting scheduled and just with everything going on and start of hybrid, and then having a, a couple of meetings this week, we just, we weren't able to get anything scheduled. So the goal is to try to meet next week, so we're going to get, we're going to try and get something scheduled. But I don't have a date yet.
Great, thank you. Next, future dates and agenda items. Our next actual regular school committee meeting is Tuesday, October 27th at 7:30. And school committee comments. I just want to remind my fellow school committee members that this evening is Chris Callanan's last regular school committee meeting. So with that, Colleen?
Yes? Sorry, I was adding the calendar. Yeah, Chris, I just, I just wanted to say a few things. Given that next, tomorrow's meeting is, is not really our meeting that we're, we're joining the town council, and so we hope to see you there as well. But most importantly, we're losing our best dressed school committee member. And you've worked really hard at that, and we recognize. And you've worked really hard at that, and we recognize that. And I hope to look forward to seeing your outfits. Okay, but as long as I've been tuned in to School Committee and now a fellow School Committee member of yours, your commitment, your preparedness and your dedication to our town and specifically the students has been extremely evident. You have been a valued mentor, and I truly enjoy getting to know you better, understand your humor and learn from your knowledge and experience. You've always shared generously, I, I think, you know, your, your knowledge and your ear has always been available to all of us. And you're going to be greatly missed. And I know that, you know, other committee members spoke last week or a few weeks ago to your dedication to our, our music program and our music staff. And I know that's a huge hole that they are going to miss. And I am a huge music supporter, although none of my boys have taken up the instruments or the voice, much to my chagrin. But I thoroughly enjoy the efforts of the program and have always seen you sort of in, in every aspect of their programs, their performances, just being that constant support system and cheerleader in the background. So, I'm just very grateful for that as well. And we'll miss you dearly. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. Suzie?
So, I'll start with my comments for Chris. I just, I want to say that 15 years of service, now having been in this role myself for a year plus, is a tremendous amount of time and commitment to make as a volunteer. This is not an easy job. You have been through ups and downs. And, and to have done that for 15 years is an incredibly selfless opportunity and, and, and gift of yourself. So, first of all, I want to thank you for that. I also kind of agree with Colleen's comment of, you know, you were all, you've, for the year and a half that I've kind of been working with you, you've always been willing to answer questions, give your opinion, you know, to kind of share how you would handle things. And that, I always felt like I could come to you with a question if I had one and, and really appreciated that. And really, I, I just want to say I wish you a tremendous amount of happiness. And I hope I get to run into you around town. But I think you, you have done so much for this town and people should really just take a step back and appreciate what 15 years of service really, really means. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I actually have a different update, though, sorry. I have an, an environmental sustainability committee update, super quick. The committee met last week or two weeks ago. And, actually, it was just last week. And there's going to be a warrant coming to town meeting that will have an impact on schools in June of 2021, if it were to be voted and approved. And this warrant is about limiting, not limiting, getting rid of the use of Styrofoam and limiting the use of straws and plastic utensils. And so, that is a warrant that is coming forward that will be impacting restaurants and pretty much the whole town, including schools. When it came up, I did talk about kind of the burden that that could put on schools, especially in a, in a, in a time when things will, finances would be tight. We have been having conversations up before COVID about kind of making some changes and trying to get rid of our Styrofoam trays. And some of those changes, from what I understand, are already in place. But there will be, there, there will be an impact. It does not need to be dealt with until, it really won't be till the school, the September of 2021 that we would need to worry about it. But if there are extenuating circumstances and we needed to get a, I can't think of the word, but like a waiver, an exception, that, that is certainly something that we can explore if, if, if where we're at when the time comes. But I didn't want anybody to be surprised that that's kind of coming forward because that was a part of the conversation there. And we've had some explicit conversations about the impact that that would have on schools. That's one thing. And then, the second thing is, Doug, I don't know if you got back to Rob Darnell about the ask to do a pumpkin drop again this year, where after Halloween, at the elementary schools, they collected pumpkins by the Black Earth composting. And we composted something like 2,000 pounds of pumpkins last year. And so, my hope is that that's going to be happening again. I don't know if you can comment on that, Doug, or if you're not, you guys aren't sure yet.
I have not gotten back to him. I'm waiting to speak to Ruth Clay about it, right? And I know that Rob has, has worked with Ruth and, and, but I, I just want to double check. But I, I think our change in color has kind of taken a greater priority over, over the pumpkin.
Over the pumpkin situation?
Yeah.
That's fair.
So, so we'll get to it.
Red does orange.
We'll get to it, yeah. We would definitely take orange over red right now. And, but we will, we'll get to him in the morning.
Okay, no rush. Thank you. That's it from me.
Thank you, Suzie. I guess I'll go next for School Committee Comments. I just obviously echo what everyone has said about you, Chris. You will be greatly missed. And like I said a couple of weeks ago, it will be really difficult to fill your shoes. For me personally, you've been a resource of information, someone that I can call and say, logistically, how am I supposed to read this motion? How do I write this motion? Yes, and I know I still can. But through the couple of years that I've been here, you've taught me a lot, and I really do appreciate your 15 years of service. And like Suzie said, it, it is really just kind of mind-blowing to think of, you know, the commitment that you have made to the district and not only on School Committee, but the other boards also that you volunteer on. So, you know, I hope you don't go far because I'm sure we will still need your guidance. And I definitely am very envious of your outfits. I always like to see what Chris is going to wear when he shows up. So, thank you so much, and I do wish you all the best of luck as well.
Thank you.
Tom, did you have any comments?
Sure. So, let me just certainly add, Chris, to what our colleagues have, have, have said and some, certainly some words that we all shared last week or last meeting. You have been a stalwart member of this community and this, and of this committee for, well, for 15 years now, through very difficult times, through not-so-difficult times and through just plain old difficult times. And you've always been a solid voice, a voice of reason, voice of soundness, voice of fairness, voice of equity, voice of passion. And I know when I joined the committee, it was, it was really a breath of fresh air to get to know you in a different way. So, I certainly join our, our colleagues in wishing you nothing but the best. You know, over, over time, you've, you know, as a Wakefield, you know, alumni, you've been an active member of the Alumni Association. As we said, music and permanent building committees, school building committees, finance committees, budgets, budgets and more budgets. You've, you know, obviously, you've raised a family in town, providing time for your family. You've helped to raise our community, providing time for us. Well, now, my friend, it's time for you. And I wish you nothing but the very best in your, in your active volunteer retirement. Stay, I, I hope we stay in touch and look very much forward to seeing you over and over again. But sincerely, Chris, thank you for everything that you've done for this town, for the school district, and wish you nothing but the best, you and your family.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Doug?
So, this is a little bittersweet. I think, you know, I, I cannot tell you how much we at Central Office and I in particular have appreciated working with you. I think, as, as everyone has said tonight, you're, you've been remarkably generous with your time and, and with your experience, right? And when we think about service over time in 2020, I don't know anyone that is on any, any committee, never mind School Committee, for 15 years. It's, that in and of itself is an amazing accomplishment. But when you, when I look back and think about the 15 years, I was thinking about, you know, where the district has come in those 15 years, Chris, right? And when we think about, you know, making a difference, right? If we want ourselves, right, to be part of something greater than ourselves and to contribute and leave something maybe better than we found it, I think I can say with a high degree of confidence that you have certainly, certainly done that for the Wakefield Public Schools, for students and for families. And, and I think I speak for all of our teachers and our administrators when I say sincerely, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You've been great for us. Thank you.
Chris?
Oh, well, you know, certainly, bittersweet is the, is the word of the night. There's, even after 15 years, I mean, I still have a passion for, for this work. I think it's, it's one of those things that's really never done. There's always going to be something new. I will wholeheartedly, you know, do whatever I can to, to support anybody and any time that has a question or just wants a sounding board or whatever. You know, I, I think our, our new high school is, is paramount to, to moving our district forward. And just how, I watched all of you handle this pandemic in the last several months. I really, I know I'm comfortable to, to know that, you know, things are going to be okay. You know, 15 years seems like a long time. But then, of course, over the weekend, I, some, some Facebook story popped up, somebody that just finished 30 years. So, you know, I just had to be held down. Life just needs to, to move on sometimes. And so, that's, that's, that's okay. I'm still, you know, I'm still working in town and I, I will still be, be here for whatever anybody wants to do. But I want to, you know, thank all of you for, you know, your, your friendship and, and, and the purpose and, and the drive that we all share together. Because it's, it's a team that we, nobody, one person can get anything done. It's always a team effort. I was thinking today, you know, I've, I've, I've watched six different superintendents in 15 years. And, and that always concerns me that, you know, we have to stop burning superintendents out so easily.
Hopefully, the new guy lasts for a little while.
It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a remarkably difficult job. And I admire the, what you, what you do. And you couldn't do it without your, your, your support behind you. And then, you know, the amount of extra work that they, they, the slack that they pick up for you. And then, their job is to make you look good. And, and, and they, they do it well, you know?
You, you do know that Amy asked us to add three slide presentations tonight to lengthen this meeting.
We're not done yet.
So, well, yeah, I, I thank you all. And some, I'm certainly not going far away. But thank you.
Well, thank you so much, Chris. Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move that the School Committee adjourn its meeting of October 14th, 2020.
Second.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded and any discussion. Seeing none, roll call vote.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Ms. Vega?
Yes.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Mr. Callanan?
Yes.
Ms. Guida?
Yes.
Thank you, and thank you all for watching tonight. That concludes our meeting for this Wednesday, October 14th. I hope you have a great night.
Good night, all.
Good night.